We'd like to call the meeting of the Danville City Commission to order. I want to welcome all of our visitors and our guests. I am Mike Perris, your mayor tonight. So we would start off with a word of prayer being led by Commissioner Cottle. And then we'll call the Danville Dart Sharks to stand and lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Commissioner Cottle?
Thank you, sir. Heavenly Father, we ask that you spread your grace and with it the hope to the people on the Gulf Coast as they find themselves in dire straits. And we also want to thank you for the blessing of the people who are helping neighbors and strangers without regard to color, party, religious affiliation, sexual orientation. They're just neighbors needing help, and they're being helped, and for that we thank you. Help us tonight to conduct ourselves in a way that's pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, why don't you guys come up to the front here? You Sharks, come up to the front.
The whole team?
The whole team, come on up to the front.
Okay, whole team.
You want like a pyramid?
Okay, our flag's right here. Oh, the flag's right here.
Yeah, look at the flag.
Wait, wait, you all get finished, don't go anywhere, just stay right there.
Yeah, just stay right there.
Stay right there, okay? All right, here we go.
Ready?
There you go, flag over here. There you go.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, thank you. Don't move, don't stay right there.
Stay right here.
Stay right there. Come back, come back. Commissioners, in light of our special guest tonight, I'd like to ask your permission to move item number three, the proclamation, to the Dart Sharks to the top of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And along with that motion, I'd also like to ask this young man who's got an article in the paper all about love to follow the Art Dart presentation.
Need a motion on that, or not?
Yeah, we'd better do one, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Terry, would you give us the honor of reading the proclamation to the Dart Sharks?
I'm gonna go down here to the podium where I can see these young faces.
Young faces, well.
Okay, this is our proclamation for the Dart Sharks conference champions. Whereas the Dart Sharks, who were established in 1997 and originally known as the Danville Area Recreational Team, but known today by coaches and swimmers as the Danville Aquatic Racing Team, won the conference championship in 2017. And whereas the Dart Sharks began the year by winning all three regular season dual meets and also won the try meet against Mount Sterling Recreation Team and the Berea Dolphins. And whereas the Dart Sharks headed into the conference championship with a 5-0 regular season record, competing against 15 teams from Central Kentucky. And whereas the Dart Sharks won the conference championship for the first time since 2002 and won the competition by more than 500 points while overcoming the 10-time defending champion. And whereas the five Dart Shark swimmers were awarded the top award for their age group, and Colin Cummins was voted as the Dusty Hicks Scholarship Award recipient by all 15 conference coaches. And whereas coaches Eric Smiley, Emily Anderson, John Anderson, and Whitney Mason, who all swam on the first Dart Shark team in 1997, are outstanding role models to the youth of Danville and the Boil County, all of the members are applauded for their exemplary attitude and contributions. And whereas the Dart Sharks team members are shining examples of focus and dedication to the best they can be as a team, coming together to accomplish great things, they are to be commended. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Perris and the city commissioners of the city of Danville, on this 28th day of August 2017, do hereby congratulate the Dart Sharks on becoming conference champions and encouraging, encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate them on their success and representation of Danville, Kentucky.
May I have a motion?
I move that we accept the proclamation into the record.
And the other guy on the microphone seconds it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Commissioners, if you all will come down the other side, they'd like to try to get a picture with all of us.
He said he also has something for us.
I have a picture for the... The Dart Sharks have a picture for the city commission?
Well, thank you. Thank you guys. Here's something. You can make pocketed if you want to use it.
Thank you so much.
Well, let's have another round of applause congratulating you.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is a great turnout on a school night. I'm sure there's a lot of soccer meets, cross-country practice, and stuff going on, so I want to thank all our parents for coming tonight. I want to thank John Drake and Harold Logue at the Bunny Davis for taking care of us. And I want to thank, this is awesome, I'm pretty excited. Thank you, guys.
I'm a former eighth grade teacher, so the Dart Sharks, you're not going to be dismissed like they normally do. We have two other presentations that we want you to stay around for. So you can go back to your seats, but please don't leave. You need to see these next two presentations as well. That's the social studies teacher coming out of me, okay? I got a captive audience in my classroom tonight. Okay, good.
If that's not enough, that will get more.
Mr. Cottle, you want to come up? And Ms. Porter?
All that power's going to your head, Mr. Atkins.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know what I'm doing. You all might have heard me on the news. My movement I'm doing is called Love, Peace, and Harmony, and my name is Bruce Cottle. I have autism, and when I watch something on the news like that really upsets me and bothers me and makes me obsessed and just upsetting, every time I see what's going on in the news and what's going on in this country, I just feel like somebody needs to do something. So I came up with this idea a few days ago about like spreading love, peace, and harmony, no matter if we agree or disagree, or our color, or our religion, or sexual orientation, if we can all just see everyone as like people and just like, and if we disagree on something, that's all right. I mean, we don't have to agree on anything. And I think this movement I'm doing is just really important because I think we all should just try to get along no matter what, and I think like if you all could like help with like signing like this pledge and ask, when I, like in a few, and asking you all to just spread love, peace, and harmony, and hope you all do.
And Bruce came up with this idea when he came into my office last week. Bruce generally has a smile on his face, and he walked in with a very, very heavy heart, and there wasn't a smile. And I'm like, Brew, what's wrong? And he was like, I just didn't want to leave my house. And so I asked Bruce, no, there's more than that. What is it? And he said, it's this world. He said, I just don't understand it. And I said, well, what are you talking about? And he said, people should just love people. And he really did use the words, no matter your race, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, or gender. He said, we should all be one. And I said, well, what do you want to do about it? And he said, I want to go to the courthouse, and I feel like our community needs another Martin Luther King Jr., and that's what I'm going to do. And so Bruce then said, I think we need T-shirts. And I said, I think you're right. We do need T-shirts. What a good idea. And initially, we came up with a T-shirt design, trying to keep the cost down. It just had two colors. And Bruce sent a text, and he said, I'd like one of those hands to be black or brown. Good idea, Bruce. Didn't think of that. I'm married to a six-foot-three, 250-pound black man, and I didn't think to put a black hand on there. So thank goodness for Brew. So we made it happen, posted it. You know, I called the T-shirt place. I said, as long as we had 10 T-shirts, we could place the order at a pretty good discount. We had 38 that day. We just took an order for 240 shirts. They're $10 apiece. We're actually gonna, if it's okay with you?
Yes.
We're gonna pass around a sign sheet. You can put your name, your phone number, and what size you want. And you too can have a, come together with Bruce, T-shirt. Bruce, what do you want to do with this movement beyond Danville?
Well, I really wanted to, like, I really want to spread this, like, not just here in Danville, but like everywhere else, because I feel like there's some better way, like, someone, I mean, like if somebody could just like get people together and just like be like just peacefully and like come together and like just spread that peace, and like it could like grow, like, like that movie, Pay It Forward and stuff like that. I just, I got kind of that idea from it, and I just thought like maybe if just this one thing I could, if I could do this, maybe, who knows, it could spread, and I just hope it spreads everywhere.
I mean, and he only has one goal. He just wants to change the world. It's not hard. It really isn't. He's already done it. So if everybody spreads a little more peace, love, and harmony, imagine what you can do. You're going to change the world. I mean, he has.
And if you have met Bruce before tonight's meeting, he's always been about peace, love, and harmony. And he always has to get in his little plug about a movie. He's also known to me as the Movie Man. But Bruce, I'm real proud of you. You're a true Tolliver saint, and I took, I gave my orders for T-shirts for my family tonight, and I want to encourage all of the Danville, Boil County, the community to get behind this young man and get behind this movement, because we need more peace, we need more love, and we need more harmony.
So we're gonna pass around this binder. There's, you're gonna see a couple different sheets. One is just a handy-dandy homemade T-shirt order form, and the other one is an actual pledge of peace, love, and harmony. Some people don't feel comfortable signing their names. We had, we ran into that in the community, so we just asked people, if you want to put a heart, that's fine. If you want to put a star, that's fine. If you want to put a smiley face, that's fine. That's you pledging more peace, love, and harmony in your life. So we're gonna just pass this binder around, sign as you will, and order T-shirts, $10 apiece. Where do you want to start?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Chief Gray, if you come forward and do the commendation while these young folks are still in my classroom this evening?
I want to take this opportunity to acclaim Bruce.
Oh, yeah.
As my nephew, so, blood kin, and he's the world's finest human, there's no question.
Amen to that.
We won't hold that against Bruce.
While, while Chiefs come in, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief Gray?
Put us back on. Good deal. I'll try to get out of the aisle, too. Come on in. They like to hide.
Says your local government at work tonight.
Commissioners, back a few years ago, September the 20th, 2013, the Danville 911 Center dispatched police officers to ABC Gold Games and Moore on South Fore Street for a shooting. Officers arrived on scene, forced entry into the business, and discovered one of the most disturbing scenes I've witnessed in my 22 years here as a police officer. The owners, Mike and Angela Hawkinsmith, along with a business associate, Dan Smith, had been shot to death numerous times. The only survivors of that incident were the two small children of the Hawkinsmiths. What began next was a very deliberate, intense, long, and collaborative investigation of that day to bring to justice the individual or individuals responsible for such a highness crime. Investigators coordinated a very detailed processing of the crime scene with state and federal assistance. After a few days, we received a tip of a possible suspect, Kenneth Allen Keith. Investigators continued to explore all leads and tips, but as the evidence continued to be collected, processed, and evaluated, it pointed to Kenneth Allen Keith as the suspect. On October the 9th, 2013, 19 days after that 911 call, the Danville Police Department, KSP, the ATF, Somerset Police Department executed an arrest warrant and five search warrants in Somerset, Kentucky for Mr. Keith and his related properties. Although the arrest had been made, investigators knew that this was a possible death penalty case, and it was far from over. I don't think any of us realized how far from over it truly was. There were well over 250 pieces of evidence gathered by detectives as a result of search warrants and other investigative techniques. Evidence to be logged, stored, and processed by different labs from the state level to the federal level. Finally, a little over three and a half years later, on May the 26th of 2017, after numerous legal obstacles, challenges, and hearings, Kenneth Allen Keith entered a guilty plea and was sentenced to life without parole on the charges of first-degree burglary, first-degree robbery, and three counts of murder for the deaths of Dan Smith and Mike and Angela Hawkinsmith. This was a culmination of thousands of work hours from a multifaceted level of law enforcement. From day one, we were constantly appraising prosecutors of the status and progress of the investigation. I cannot say enough about the collaborative effort of so many that were spearheaded by this group standing here in front of you today to bring justice and closure to the families of the Smiths and the Hawkinsmiths, and to help minimize the fear of crime in our community. I have six commendations for these individuals tonight, for their work and exemplary service over the last four years now, almost. The first one I'm going to give is to Detective Monty Owens with the Kentucky State Police. Detective Owens came out of Rainbow Cleaners that day, and the first thing he said to me was, what do you need? How can I help? His experience, his connections with KSP were invaluable asset, and he pretty much assisted our lead detective throughout the whole investigation. Monty kind of stayed with us and helped us all the way from, from that very first day until closure. I would like to give him, and I'll give them all at one time. Would like to next recognize Special Agent Brad Rusher with, he's a special agent with ATF. I believe Brad heard about the incident that day on the news. He worked with us in the past on some other cases, called down and said, hey, can I help you guys? Do you all need anything? We said, come on down, we need all hands we can get. I believe him and three other guys, Brad jumped in the car and came down and helped us that day. He also, with his connections with ATF and the lab there, and they did some of the processing of certain pieces of evidence for us, also an invaluable asset, and he also stayed with us and helped us pretty much throughout the case. The next group that I would like to recognize is Detective Dawlins, Detective Vlad, and Detective Mullins, all with the Danville Police Department. I can't tell you what all they did, because they did so much, the list is just too long to go into. But they were there helping our lead detective, shoring him up from that very first day of that very, very long and extenuous case. I'd also would like to recognize Assistant Chief Robert Estle. He is the primary supervisor for investigation, and he's also the evidence custodian. So all those 250 pieces of evidence pretty much passed through his hands once, and sometimes three or four different times, going from labs, going to the courthouse, and other things. He was also the gold between, between me and pretty much this unit here during that whole timeframe. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize the lead detective on the case, Detective Kevin Peel. He was kind of the tip of this big spear here of the investigation. He worked and led this collaborative unit in a collaborative effort. This bunch of people put down egos. They just came and saw one thing that needed to be done, and that was to solve this case. And that's what this unit did. And if it didn't go good, Kevin was going to take the, that's what happens with the point of the spear, he falls on it. But I can't say enough about Detective Peel and this group, and the efforts and the time that they put into that investigation. And I thought this was appropriate time, some months, that we have finally got a closure on that case for the Hawkinsmiths and the Smiths. And at this time, I'd like to present each one of them with a commendation for their exemplary work on a very highness crime that was committed in our communities. Thank you. Also, Mr. Bottoms here, he was the prosecutor on that case, and I thought he might want to just say a couple of words.
Just briefly, I would echo what the chief says, and this case could have very well went unsolved but for these people here, and their efforts were second to none. I would stack them up against any agency. I'm privileged to work with them on a daily basis, and I do appreciate their efforts. And on behalf of the families, I echo their thanks for all of this, because they went through a lot. And as I say, if these folks hadn't have done what they done and worked together the way they worked, it could have taken even longer to solve if it got solved at all. And the only other thing I would say is, with a case like this, you should be challenged in court, because you should be held to a high standard, because there's a person in prison right now who's going to die there. And so you need to be held to the highest standard possible, and we were done that. We faced challenges in court. We never lost a single suppression hearing, any other kind of hearing. Anything that went to the court, it was upheld as being done right, and I just truly appreciate that. So I echo my sentiments of the chief. Thank you all. (applause)
Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. I just noticed that Mr. John Drake, the director of Parks and Rec, is present, and I think one of his board members is present as well. Mr. Drake, want to comment about this swimming team?
They're ready to go, very quick.
(laughing) Okay. They don't want to go, we've got homework ahead of them.
First of all, you see a sampling of the 19, the 2017 Dart Sharks. There were 100 members of this team. The coaches worked tirelessly. They get up at 6:30 in the morning. They have one group that comes in early, one group comes in a little later. They clearly are athletes in our community that are unsung and have been at Bunny Davis Pool since 1997. They've used that as their home pool. We're very fortunate in the community, we have a couple of indoor pools that allow us to have that first week of practice in a little bit of warmer climate. But these kids really are to be congratulated, and their parents are to be congratulated, because the parents, and Shawna, and those people that lead the group are all volunteers. It's a volunteer group, and, and the Parks Board is just a very, very small part of this great team. So thank you all for coming, thank you for recognizing them.
All right, Sharks, class dismissed.
Thank you all.
But you're welcome to stay.
Thank you, and congratulations.
As they dismiss themselves, we're going to go back to our first hear the public, a chance to speak on items that are on our agenda.
You can tell who the season ticket holders are.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. And then there were five.
Well, I thought it was, that's why I said, let's hold them captive for a few minutes, because they need to see some of this. I was trying to let some folks out in the hallway who are probably coming back to our meeting come in, and I'll announce that we're at our first hear the public item.
I thought you were going to say something else.
Okay, no one to hear the public, started to speak to us tonight, okay? Well, now let's go on to item number, oh. Item number four, the City Government Month Proclamation. Donna, do you have that proclamation? Could you read that for us, please, ma'am?
Yes, this is the proclamation for City Government Month, September 2017. Whereas the Kentucky League of Cities has developed City Government Month, a civic awareness campaign to educate elementary school students about city services. And whereas KLC created City Government Month, lesson plans, a coloring activity book, and an implementation guide, developed a kid-friendly website for use in the classroom, and created promotional materials for city officials, students, and teachers. And whereas the city of Danville supports the efforts to engage all children in the community by hosting tours of the fire station, city hall, water plant, and police department, and by visiting local schools to educate about the functions of local government. And whereas City Government Month strives to connect both elected and appointed city officials with local school principals, teachers, and children, while furthering social studies academic standards for the state. Now therefore, be it resolved by Mayor G. Michael Perris and city commissioners of the city of Danville on this 28th day of August 2017, do hereby designate the month of September as City Government Month, and encourage the ongoing efforts of Board of Commissioners and city employees to collaborate with local elementary schools to further educate students about their government and engage them in city services during the month of September, as well as throughout the year.
Thank you, ma'am. Entertained a motion, please?
I move to accept the proclamation for City Government Month.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item number five, Resolution 2017-08-2801, CERS Resolution Supporting Separation. Mr. Scott.
Yes, members of the Board of Commissioners. The resolution presented tonight is one that is presented and recommended by the Kentucky League of Cities for all cities throughout Kentucky that are currently members of the county employee... county employees retirement system, which is our retirement system, that the city of Danville participates in as mandated by Kentucky law. The concern that is underway throughout our state is the question of pension solvency or insolvency, and the relative degree to which the various funds administered by the state are funded, and what changes may be brought about regarding those systems in a special session that the chair has indicated he will call together this fall. The elements of this resolution are based upon the legislation introduced during the last regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly, Senate Bill 226, Senate Bill 226, which basically would establish a separate board to govern the local pension systems of cities and school boards and counties, in recognition that the monies in those retirement systems are those solely contributed by those employers and by the employees within the system. And it would... this resolution calls for the creation of that board that would, under Senate Bill 226 or the equivalent that will be introduced in the next session, empower that board basically to carry out the current pension systems that are in place for all of those employees. It's designed to separate those systems from potential adverse consequences of underfunding at the Kentucky Employee Retirement System, which is woefully underfunded compared to national standards or any other state-funded system. And the belief of the cities throughout Kentucky, counties, school boards, and their retirees, that this option is our best option in terms of preserving and getting to full solvency of the systems that currently operate. It would change no retirement benefit or guarantee currently in place. The involuntary contract provision of state law would remain. This simply creates an administrative mechanism whereby the participating members would have direct representation on those boards and govern those boards separately from the other systems as currently combined under one administrative... one or more administrative boards at the state level. So it's a resolution recommended to us by our League of Cities, and I would encourage your consideration and adoption of the resolution.
Chair, would you entertain a motion?
I move for...
What's that?
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-08-2801.
Is it a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Go ahead.
No, I don't have any.
Is this all we need to do? Does this carry the force of...
I think it's an expression of this body, and we would transmit it to the League of Cities and to our area legislators, and ask that they support this effort of maintaining the existing level of benefits as guaranteed under the state pension system for our current employees and those enrolled as employees under the system. So the effort, as we all know, is going to be one that's going to be a challenging one to correct or to address. Governor has indicated last week in the Governor's Local Issues Conference that he was not going to personally allow this to be kicked down the road further in terms of addressing insolvency and structural issues. There are legal complications that are beyond my ability to adequately address in terms of the various elements of that. This resolution passed tonight is simply to try to maintain what is in place right now for our local government employees and to maintain that promise that was given to them when they began their employment careers.
And I don't know if you're gonna plan on reading the whole thing, but I think reading the second, third bullet points are pretty important, I think. That kind of says it in a nutshell.
You mean, whereas the county employees' retirement system is currently funded at 62 percent, a higher funded ratio than it was prior to passage of Senate Bill 2, which was the earlier reform of the pension systems. And whereas the Kentucky Employees Retirement System, which is the state... It's the worst funded system in the U.S. that was made by our government, it's the central financial hurdles. Of persistent funding shortfalls, elevated contribution levels, unsustainable payout ratios, and worst-case scenario, the potential for the complete depletion of the asset base. And whereas total assets of the county employee retirement system are about $12 billion, 73 percent of the total Kentucky retirement system's assets. And it goes on to say, basically, the county employees' retirement system is currently predicted to be on a trajectory towards complete 100 percent funding status the year 2045 by independent actuaries. So this is the best funded system of the various state systems. Kentucky lags the nation in terms of funding their systems. And the governor stated at the Governor's Local Issues next week that unless some changes were to take place in those systems, the delivery of state services could be severely compromised in future years. So he's tending to address that and try to bring about some revisions, which of course will be subject to a lot of discussion, members of the General Assembly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're on item number five, and with your permission, I'd go ahead and call for the question on number five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you can take over at number six.
Mr. Atkins, if you'd like, you can take your own place, do so.
Put your microphone.
Well, with his permission, then I'd ask Mr. Scott, you have items six, seven, and eight on your agenda coming up next, so you might as well proceed, and just, if you go from six to seven, just let us know when you change pathways.
Okay, yes, sir. Number six is gonna be... ...a process challenge for us to... My microphone seems to be... That's a battery issue or some other issue, but...
I promise that's not us.
You know, the city is on a tight budget, and I've been downsized tonight because I'm in a small, broken chair that is lower, so maybe it's not perfectly matching the microphone.
I was saying, we're not cutting your microphone off.
We have had, of course, a lengthy process involved in that discussion.
Dead zone over there.
It's showing green, okay. Over the last year and a half plus, we've had a lengthy discussion with our consultant, RKG, with regard to our community effort, which was frankly led by the city in terms of funding the RKG study, but collaboratively and collectively, we have attempted to restructure our EDP organization to have more effective processes and therefore more effective outcomes. We went through an effort a time or two to come up with revision to existing bylaws. Our local newspaper has reported on the... Have equal representation on that EDP board as the bylaws contemplate and as are reconstituted. The earlier draft was sent out for comment, I believe, prior to the August 16th meeting of the EDP Board of Directors. That was a day in which we were not present at that meeting due to other commitments that we had to be at. But the process, as identified by Ben Nelson, the Chair of the EDP, was basically to disseminate the bylaws to all the potential members of the EDP Board and to seek their adoption or comments, or both, really. So all of the county, the various private investors, the industrial foundation, others are receiving these bylaws and looking them over, and either going to adopt them without any potential change, or possibly suggest changes and adopt them with suggested changes. Those would come back together later this year at the EDP Board and would be adopted in a process yet to come, I guess, in a month or two. Our city attorney reviewed these bylaws. We do have some changes that we think are warranted and suggested, and going into detail into the bylaws, which hopefully you had a chance to review. Either I or Mr. Dexter is more perfectly aligned with his microphone, might wish to comment on those particular amendments that are suggested for your consideration. And Stephen, I'll be happy to continue if you want, unless you want, I'm ready to do that.
I'm happy to address it if you want to. I come about 45 minutes prior to each meeting to make sure my microphone is well-charged. So I think mine's ready to go.
Are you making that suggestion back out for us?
I know.
We charge it a score.
That's right, I like to have my seat warm. And my microphone.
Mr. Scott will keep me seated warm for it.
That's right. And Ron, perhaps I am missing in my packet the agenda item number where those revisions are, but I'm not seeing them readily.
They should be under...
The last two pages.
Six, under six, following the bylaws directed themselves for your suggested revisions to those.
Oh, I'm there now, okay, thank you. Many of the items that are... were the suggested revisions were those that simply cleaned up what we perceived was the intention of the parties to begin with. And if so, so they were offered as friendly amendments to coincide with the conversations that I've been privy to with the city managers involved. One of which was, there was this idea that was... seemed to be... have consensus around it, that there needed to be... I think the term was, you need to have skin in the game, or you need to pay to play. I think it was what RKG said. And the bylaws were set up in a manner in which there were different partners, and particularly the cities of Junction City and Parable had sitting members... or sitting members on the Board of Directors. However, they would not get to vote in the event that they did not make a contribution based on the scale or the equation that was used in the agreement. And perhaps, just format-wise, we thought it might be wiser to not even make those entities partners that don't... I mean, excuse me, not give them a place on the Board of Directors if they don't contribute, as opposed to making them a director and then preventing them from voting. Just format-wise.
I think it largely is sort of philosophical issue. The EDP wanted to be inclusive with all the governments in Boil County, and so they were striving to find a way in which the other more modest-sized cities could be included on the Board, but they recognized that if they didn't contribute, perhaps they should not vote on issues. So there was sort of a de minimis fee structure that was created so that it would be relatively easy for them to pay to play, as was said. But the question arises, is that the best approach? And that's what our counsel is suggesting.
I'm not aware of any corporate format that prohibits or prohibits a sitting director from voting. In my experience in providing counsel for corporations, I've never seen a requirement that strips a director of the right to vote. So is that... I've not seen an authority that allows the stripping of a director's right to vote. If you're a director, you have fiduciary obligation to vote in the best interest of the corporate entity, and I've never seen it where a director is stripped of that right to vote, other than being stripped of their seat. So that's just a practical point from my end.
So that just kind of becomes self-serving, because if you get somebody a seat on the Board and they don't have the right to vote, they're not gonna keep coming. They're not gonna continue to be a player.
You wouldn't think. So practically speaking, it seems like if you want to be a partner, pay, and then sit on the Board, and every director have the right to vote. Just don't make someone a director possibly if they're not going to participate by playing or paying. Anyway, that one can be debated. It was, at a rough review of the document, one that we thought should be considered. And the first revision suggested, the number one, was simply based on the concern of that a government... a private entity does not by itself possess a power to name a government to its Board. So... or to its organization. Or else you could have any nonprofit organization do that. And so we just clarified that the partners, upon an affirmative vote of those public agencies, they could participate. Again, it's just fine tuning. Same with the advisory partners, just to match that language. And we've already talked about five. And in number six, I think there was... there are two members that are selected at large, and I think it says that the partnership's private investors shall collectively appoint their directors to the Board. To me, I think that is... what I understand the intention of that to be, is that the independent investors will not get together and decide them collectively, but each individual investor will decide who their representative will be. So I think the use of the word collectively was perhaps misplaced. Maybe not, but that's the way I read it.
Well, it's supposed to be collective, there could be multiple... there's three today, but there could be five, six, seven, 10 investors to choose.
Well, the point is, if there's Farmers Bank, Ephraim McDowell, Center College, and let's just say, two other industries, are the group of those five supposed to select three? So if 10 organizations give $50,000, they're not each gonna get a seat at the Board. They're gonna choose three. Okay, so I misunderstood that. So you can strike that. And then, the last two bullets were simply... in seven and eight, were recommended revisions about having, instead of the chairman of the Board, establishing the salary or making a recommendation to the Board of Directors, we felt that the Board of Directors should establish the compensation. It's just a rewording of that one, instead of having the director simply make a recommendation and then having a vote on it. And that would be likewise to the president/CEO evaluating any employee and having the directors establish employees' compensation. Of course, the chief administrator would have a recommendation in that, but we felt that it was best... that that best power would be best vested in the Board as a whole, as opposed to a particular position being chairman or a particular officer being the president/CEO.
Could we go back to the last point?
Sure, the one prior?
Yes. It sounds like to me, it's very discouraging to get more private members to pay to play if they're not gonna really get a seat on the Board. If my company gave $25,000, $50,000, whatever it is, I would expect a seat on the Board, period.
I would probably... now that I understand the use of that word collectively, I would probably need to review that section of the bylaws again with a different eye, because that was not my understanding. I guess I presumed, based on the private investors in the past, that if there were to continue to be three, because there were three investors and there are three seats on the Board, that each investor would have that seat. So that was just, I guess, a false assumption on my part. But I can read it again with that in light.
I sort of read it the same way you did, that... or I guess that's the understanding from going... attending meetings also, that if it's pay to play... from going, attending meetings also, that if it's pay-to-play, if someone pays...
Yeah, but I think it's a safety net for the city and county, if you look at it. We get three, county gets three, and private partners are limited to three, regardless of how many private partners there are.
It does help maintain a balance, certainly.
That's what I look at, yeah.
That, and also, I think the, just the functional size of a Board.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just saying that they're not really getting a seat.
Well, and...
It's got to be rotating maybe, or whatever.
Sure. And I think, granted, people would concede the fact that that would be a wonderful problem to have, and that...
It would be.
Bylaws, by their very nature, are amendable.
Yeah.
And they're intended to be that way, not to be written in stone, but to be malleable, so to speak, and to change with the times. So if there were, was a large influx of private investors that had some type of change, obviously the Board could consider bylaw revisions at that time. One of the things that's healthy about this process is, I understand the fact of putting what you perceive to be the consensus of people into writing, but it's good to put it out there, to have all these multiple "I's" on them, because sometimes we write things that they say exactly what you mean, and sometimes they don't. So I can appreciate whoever took the effort to draft these. And again, these are just, we would say, friendly suggestions or revisions to make them the best that they can be from the city's point of view.
I just wanted to make that clear, make sure that we make that clear to anyone new that should come in, because they're going to be under the understanding that if they give their contribution, then they're going to automatically get a seat. I mean, that's, I think that's what anybody would think coming in.
Now, if these things pass, they walk.
But that needs to be stated.
Yeah.
That needs to be clear.
Procedurally, I would recommend that we take no action on these tonight, that we consider those in conjunction with the draft bylaws. And at our next meeting, we come back, and perhaps between now and then, we will have additional opportunity to have discussion with the Nelsoners or others, and take final action in terms of what we perceive the ideal bylaws would be at the next meeting.
Wouldn't it be better served to send our suggested changes to the committee that's doing this?
We could. It's sort of a management process. I mean, we have a lot of different organizations that are looking at this. There was some effort to discuss these earlier, recognizing that they had yet to go through review by the various organizations. So I don't know when, I don't know if the timeline originally considered that these would be fully adopted, maybe by October, will be met or not. And perhaps your point is, we might not want to take final action, but rather, at the next meeting, conclude what we think are the best bylaws, and just forward those without final adoption. We could do that, if you wish.
But if you've got five groups, there's an example, looking at this, and all five groups' suggestions back, then to me, for a simple of those five groups' suggestions, need to look at those five and come up with a corrected draft, and send it back out to the five groups again, because they may love what Stephen has suggested to us. I do. They may not agree.
Correct.
If our friendly amendments don't get added to the document, we've already approved it. So I think it's important to send these suggested changes back from all groups, have someone synthesize them, and then put back out another draft for all groups to look over. So we finally do a final vote. We're voting on a document that's been approved by all those agencies up or down.
Are you, perhaps Commissioner Atkins, recalling that our constitutional conventions in Danville were 10 different...
Well, but, to me, it's important that, when we say this has been approved by, I go back to my five agencies, all five have approved the same thing. That's all I'm saying.
That would be ideal, certainly.
So perhaps, in our discussion of what's come to light of the use of the word collective in that one sentence, if that item in particular was struck, then you could, in essence, instruct these suggestions to be forwarded to the drafting party for synthesis with other proposed
Would that be appropriate, or how would we...
revisions.
Yeah.
Let's call these staff's revisions, and not just my particular revisions.
Because if all five groups send back the exact same suggestions you submitted, then
You're the one who warmed up the seat.
to me, it's a no-brainer, but that's probably not going to happen, but you got to get one
I certainly reviewed the document, but it was in concert with the group. I just, I got to pin them.
document together pretty soon.
But yes, if you would like to make a motion to submit staff's proposed revisions to the
Well, if that is the direction of the commission, we can do that, and there's no point in waiting another two weeks to do that.
EDP working group for consideration, I think that would be an appropriate motion.
No, that's right.
Time is of the essence, so...
Yeah.
Sure, I think it's the duty of every partner to look at these closely, and to make suggestions
Okey-dokey. I will make a motion that we submit staff's revisions to the working group for consideration.
to provide them to the core working group who's developing these, and is put in the
I'll second that motion.
necessary hours to do so, and for them to consider them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had one quick question. On page seven, section three, it talks about quorum.
I was waiting on the mirror.
You wait a long time.
Do you have to define the number that a quorum is?
Heart of change. Are those in favor of motion on the floor?
And through the rest of this document, it talks about two-thirds majority votes and
Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Scott, number seven?
things like that. Do you have to define what the number is for quorum?
Generally, the natural meaning of quorum is just a majority of those on the Board.
Yes, sir. The next issue on the agenda goes to the question of the intent or the requirements
So on a nine-member Board, you'd have five to have quorum.
Okay, so that's just understood, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question, though.
of the city in establishing $40,000 grant to implement the RKG study recommendations.
Old civics lesson, right?
You might go back briefly in time and recall again, the city's lead on trying to conduct a study to improve our EDP operations, our collective and collaborative efforts to do so, and then the encouragement of the city commission in adopting the budget this spring to encourage implementation of the RKG recommendations. Originally, we had, as part of that encouragement, if I can use that word, additional increased funding for, additional staff, frankly, to implement the RKG recommendations. There was a lot of discussion in the community, among citizens, about funding new positions. It comes to mind, our medical dispatch positions that we talked about, it comes to mind, our historic preservation office. And so essentially, the recommendation and the adoption of that recommendation made by the city commission was, in the funding of new position or in total, we would create a grant program and seek new money as a way of trying to encourage our community to come together and support additional work on the implementation of the RKG recommendations. You know, the findings of the RKG, first and foremost, were a bust fact that we need additional money into that operation to have different outcomes. And so this is an example for, perhaps, our intent was to encourage private sector...
Private sector. Private sector. Louder.
Our intent was to encourage additional contributions. In reality, the city and the agency to take the lead on providing that seat. In reality, the city and the agency to take the lead on providing that seat. In reality, the city and the agency to take the lead on providing that seat. In reality, the city and the agency to take the lead on providing that seat. Should that be used to access the $40,000 to get additional resources?
Would you repeat that again?
Let's hold up just a minute until we get this microphone issue resolved, if we could.
She's working on a microphone back there. Could you maybe just repeat towards the end there, Ron?
The budget as adopted had a provision for a $40,000 grant to encourage new private sector investment to match the public sector grant. The question is, despite the intent to initially require other private sector investment, would you want to amend the grant process to allow carryover funds from the EDP, to the extent they have those, which are comprised of private and public sector money, just to access the grant, to go on and see if we can't get additional boots on the ground and staff capability to move us all forward? That's, in essence, the question.
The, on the agenda, it has this as an action item. In order to get us off ground zero, I will make a motion, let me know if I do this correctly, that we do allow carryover funds to be included as part of the matching funds request. That good enough?
Would you, would you, would you consider making that, an amendment to that, that this being this time only? My concern is that we begin to hold money back within the EDP and not spend money for what it's used for. But if you want to move on with your motion, that's fine. I'm good with that. We can talk about it.
I'm trying to absorb what you're saying. Say it again, so I'm...
The $35,000 is there because it was not originally spent for marketing, as I recall. Well, that's why we put our money in there, because we wanted more marketing in this. We want our people out doing whatever. We've got to market this community. And so the funds were held, the funds did not get spent in total.
Well, it was my understanding, and I may be wrong, y'all correct me if I am, but since we, since that $35,000 was allocated, didn't we then hire RKG? It's my understanding, they were kind of waiting for RKG to see what they wanted to do, and then they came up with this idea of this, we need this second person badly, so they just sort of hung on to it until...
We sort of had two things on the floor currently. Commissioner Cottle made a motion...
Yeah, he made a motion. Go ahead with your motion.
Okay. Theoretically, this died because there were, for lack of a second, so...
True.
We can continue the discussion. You can take Commissioner Paris's suggestion and offer up a new motion. I think what Mayor Paris is saying is that this max and grant be one-time-only opportunity for EDP, not an additional $40,000 to our regular funding every year. Does my translating that for you properly?
Correct.
So we really don't currently have a motion on the floor at all, so...
Okay. So can we still discuss, or do we need a motion?
Well, that's procedurally up to you.
Stephen's ticking over there.
Well, someone can make an additional motion at this time to consider any future discussion on the matter.
Yeah.
A motion was made, failed for lack of a second.
Commit that. Do you want to finish that out?
Well, his motion?
No, we'll make another motion.
I'm training a meeting tonight, so I don't feel appropriately making the motions.
That's a cheap way.
Duck that one out of there.
My prerogative, right, Stephen?
It is.
As the presiding officer tonight, it sure is.
Well, I was going to say, my, my whole thought is, you know, we're trying to get this off ground zero. Let's go, we're stumping our toe on a stool that's probably not in our way. I think everybody has a common goal. We don't necessarily have to always be right down the middle, 50-50 on a common goal, as long as we're all shooting for that one thing. So that was the reason I didn't care where the, where their money came from at this point. Now, I'll need to do some thinking on your, what about, that doesn't give them much long-term stability in that position, I guess, is my fear, but...
Well, and I got that. And my fear would be that monies that we put up for a certain purpose don't get completely accessed for that single purpose. And as far as you're concerned, which I absolutely share, and I've articulated that on two different EDP meetings, but that's their challenge. That's a separate issue from this, as I see it.
Maintaining the funds for that second spot.
This is a separate issue. This grant we put in here, the $40,000 grant we put in, that was intended to be a one-time deal.
But it had stipulations with it.
Right, and it was not intended to be a ramp-up of our annual contributions.
And now they're asking for the stipulations to be changed.
And I'm okay with that for this transaction, to get this done.
The other thing that came to mind is, if they hadn't told us this is where it came from, we wouldn't even have known.
Yes, because we said it had to be new money.
How would we know if it's new or old?
Because Ben, first of all, Ben Nelson assured us at an EDP meeting that he had a plan for new money. Because the word "new" has always been in there.
Well, and...
And he assured us that he had a plan, and now apparently they don't, and they're asking us for more money. When we, that will put us up to $250,000 to EDP in the last year, $145,000 that we upped from last year, $20,000. We paid $65,000 of the strategic plan, is that right? And now they're asking for $40,000 more. That's $250,000 that the city of Danville has given alone. How much is enough?
And I would think, as our partner, they would disclose truthfully...
Well, I agree, and I expected them to, and I'm glad they did.
Right.
But I'm just, as a matter of course, and I look at that money as an investment. We've spent more on less in my time here, but, you know, everybody has their opinion, I think. I just think we need to get the, get the thing off ground zero and get moving.
But if we're going to spend $250,000 for EDP, we can pay two, probably three people for less than that, and we can control it, we can manage it, and we can measure it, and we can benefit.
I would disagree with that, but that's okay.
Let me offer a motion.
And he, he assured us that he had a plan, and now apparently they don't, and they're asking us for more money. When we, that will put us up to $250,000 to EDP in the last year. $145,000 that we upped from last year, $20,000. We paid $65,000 of the strategic plan, is that right? And now they're asking for 40,000 more. That's $250,000 that the City of Danville has given alone. How much is enough?
And I would think as our partner, they would disclose truthfully...
Well, I, I agree, and I, I expected them to, and I'm glad they did.
Right.
But I'm just, as a matter of course, and I look at that money as an investment. We've spent more on less in my time here, but, you know, everybody has their opinion, I think. I just think we need to get the, get the thing off ground zero and get moving.
But if we're going to spend $250,000 for EDP, we can pay two, probably three people for less than that, and we can control it, we can manage it, and we can measure it, and we can benefit.
I would disagree with that, but that's okay.
Let me, let me offer a motion. And you can not second it, or you can vote it down, doesn't matter. I, I would, I would make a motion that we grant the $35,000 leftover money be used to access 35 out of our $40,000 grant as one-time only. This time only. That next year, for clarification, at budget time, we will have a decision whether that $40,000 grant actually gets included in the budget again or not.
Again, that kind of goes back to the stability of that... And you say that that's their deal, well, that's our deal, we're all in this together. I mean, we should be.
Is that your second to the motion?
I understand what you're saying, I honestly do.
Do we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? I said a motion dies for lack of a second. Someone want to try again?
Yes, we can move on next agenda item, huh? I'm going to agree with Commissioner Terry on what we invested in EDP, and I think, you know, I'm backing that group pretty well, but you got $250,000, and we don't talk about some of the things the city's done to help the efforts of the EDP in, in matching grants for BCTC, and the expanded water line out to the industrial park. I think we're doing a lot here, and so a nickel is a nickel at this point.
The 65,000, I don't think is going to be your... What was that for, what was that earmarked for? It was for a study that we're not going to have to have again. So, yes, we did, that's what we spent, but that's not necessarily what we're going to spend.
I think the city has more than proven our commitment to economic development.
I disagree. We have never been behind them since we started. It's always been something.
Well, okay.
Pull your foot out and shoot it.
Well, let's talk about money.
What's that?
Talking, I, I meant money. We, we have, we have given money every time they have asked. And now they're asking for more. I don't think the other partners have done their part, and the stipulation on this $40,000, which was not even guaranteed the whole $40,000, it was up to $40,000 of new money. That was the stipulation. And Ben Nelson assured us in their budget meeting, I was there, the mayor was there, that he had a plan to raise that money.
So there are two issues on the table again. To give an additional $40,000 maxing grant, one time, or make it a part of our regular, in addition to our regular contribution, or to send this back to EDP and ask them to come forth with a new plan that shows $40,000 matching in new monies.
If I may, I think procedurally, there have been two motions, both of which died for a second, for lack of a second. So you don't have to take a vote to affirm what already exists.
Sure.
So that's the only clarification I have for your, for your comment. If we make any other motions, but if no motions are successfully made, then you simply move to the next agenda.
I said, we move to the city manager report.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to reiterate my motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, restate.
I'd like to, I'm being asked to restate my motion. My motion would be that we allow, as a one-time-only gesture of good faith, that the $35,000 be used to access 35 out of this $40,000 grant, and I underscore that it's one, that is a one-time-only transaction.
I'll second that.
We're properly moving second, so we are into discussion. Pretty retell you, because no less than...
Our efforts to be more successful at economic development. Staff to carry out the pages and pages of work implementation that the RKG report generated. This will help us get it started. There are no guarantees that the city manager will recommend or the city commission will adopt any $40,000 grant in the future.
That's true, could be a whole different commission and...
So this is, for the present moment, for attempting to move forward with the initial implementation of RKG. How far we get, what else is going to be necessary, those are all future issues to be determined. But I do think that despite the grant being established, perhaps as a response to citizen objections about new staff, new expenses, et cetera, if we were sincere in really trying to develop the RKG study and improve economic development outcomes, this is a reasonable modification. Simply to say, at this present point in time, we'll grant that match to any monies that are there, regardless where they came from.
I agree, and I think the...
Next year's a, next year's a whole new ballgame.
I think the RKG study sort of changed some things anyway, in my mind, as far as what our commitment needed to be, so... But your, your point's well taken, I think that's good.
Other discussions, other comments? Someone call for, I call for the question then. Made by the mayor that we consider $40,000 matching grant?
Would you consider a roll call vote, please?
Would I consider a roll call vote? It been requested?
Sure.
Well, yes, ma'am, but, but the $40,000 maxing grant, or up to $40,000 maxing grant, be awarded to EDP, that's all.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
No.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Saries?
No.
Thank you, motion carries, so we move to idling, city manager report.
Thank you, again. My report tonight is going to focus primarily or exclusively upon our status of implementation of 911 service upgrades. In your packet, I have a rather detailed three-page memo that I'm going to spend a little time going over for the benefit of the commission, for our staff, and for the public, to understand where we are in the process of, of updating and improving our 911 center. You clearly recall that the city budget for the current fiscal year, as adopted and more recently amended, includes funding for purchasing of new E911 equipment and software, and relocating that equipment and that center to our police station, City Hall, here at this location. We, as a city, do anticipate first paying for those costs and then recovering those costs from funds currently being held in escrow for this purpose by Boyle County. Our approved city work plan is to upgrade equipment and software over the next several months and to implement the new E911 center on or before April 1 of 2018. We are working to accomplish that timeline, and we do, as a city, anticipate continuing to provide professional E911 service to all entities in Boyle County that wish to continue to receive those services. At a prior meeting, this commission encouraged staff to look more closely at the timeline for implementation of medical dispatch service in a sooner timeframe rather than after July 1 of next year, in other words, the next budget year. And we have closely examined that question again. We believe that in the relatively near term, it would be possible to implement medical dispatch service upon meeting several conditions that are prerequisites to providing that service that we'll talk about in this memo and in this meeting. We do, do believe it's possible and probable that we can meet all of those conditions, and that we will be able to implement medical dispatch services before December 31 of 2017.
Will you repeat that?
Yes, we, we fully intend to and believe we can implement medical dispatch services before, before the end of the calendar year, December 31, 2017. Uh, that's contention upon meeting several conditions that we'll talk about. Our hangup in the budget last year, as you recall, was the, the total cost of staff, which was $250,000 to $300,000 in terms of staff and benefits. And that remains primarily the largest challenge in doing that, but we have a plan where we can begin to implement that service. Let's think just for a moment about our existing 911 center. It is, has, is a center of excellence, and those are not my words, those are the words of the state police audits, which have found a zero error rate in recent years. Those are the words of the training, Department of Criminal Justice training that uses our E911 staff to train other service centers, such as the one most recently in Glasgow. And that small, dedicated staff, primarily women, and maybe exclusively women at the present time, handles from 130,000 to 150,000 calls annually, of which approximately 20,000 are true emergency, E911 calls. They are the focus of a lot of calls that come in for service by the city on, in other departments, and a lot of folks, for better or worse, call administratively out there when they want something, whether it's emergency or something else. And until we have some other call center identified, which we are in the process of refining, that's a key linkage to our city and its citizens for services asked for and received. The E911 center is a division of the Danville Police Department organizationally, and is directly supervised by Danville Police Chief and Assistant Police Chief Estle. I do oversee the function of all city departments, but it's oversee, not directly supervise. I've mentioned the fact that our E911 center is integral and critical to our city's ability to provide a rapid response in local emergencies. Our average response time is something we can be proud of, and I can speak for personal experience when I had a personal total car accident in 2012 at the corner of Walnut and Third Streets, right at the corner of the hospital. Our first responders were there within three or four minutes. And they assisted exiting myself and my wife from the vehicle, and rather than calling the emergency ambulance in that time, you know, we walked down to the hospital and were treated for injuries at the scene. But they, they have a terrific response anywhere within our corporate limits, not just around the corner from City Hall here, and that's incredible response time. We are, most frequently, the first responders of all first responders on a scene, and we provide treatment often in those cases on the scene with our qualified EMTs or paramedics. This is a process that has been honed over some time. It's a degree of excellence that requires trust and cooperation between the dispatcher and our responders. And so that is something I wouldn't say lightly, that can be recreated instantly by any other service center. So it does exist to the benefit of our citizens, not only for the true E911 calls, but for over the 100,000 other administrative calls they receive on an annual basis. We've talked earlier, at our last meeting at the 911 center, about our planned new equipment upgrades, which would have the automatic displays in all the vehicles of city or county or other first responders that would automatically show where everybody else is and their response time to the unit, which would, again, increase efficiency, safety, and delivering the key first responses required, depending on circumstances. So, and all of that will further enhance the safety of the first responders as well, and decrease the need to talk when not necessary, because they'll be able to visually see where people are on the screen. So providing services, protecting our citizens, and responding to their emergencies is the key and primary responsibility of our city government. In our representative form of city government, and you are up there and you know this, locally elected city officials are directly responsible to the citizens they serve. It is important in the delivery of all city services, including E91. In considering alternatives, our staff and city commission have both and all concluded that by continuing to operate our existing Danville E911 call center, and by making equipment, software, and staffing enhancements, the city will best meet the needs of our city residents and best fulfill our obligations as a city to protect and serve our citizens. Now, in all alternative, alternatives presented by Boyle County regarding the regional provision of E911 services, Danville citizens would still be paying the largest share of operating costs, regardless of how those costs are comp, are computed, whether they're on a volume per call basis, per capita basis, or whatever. So, I mean, we would, under any arrangement, still be the largest contributor to the financial success of that regional E911 dispatch center, but we would lose all control of operations under any or all of the proposals made to date. You've got a plan presented where three elected judges from three counties would have direct operational and policy control over how those services are provided. The, so the proposed regional Bluegrass E911 board would not be directly accountable to the citizens of Danville whatsoever. The loss of political accountability for operations, the loss of operational control, and the loss of direct coordination of the delivery of our city services, the achievement of only probably marginal cost savings if those are achieved by regional approach, and the other reasons I've already mentioned, our current excellence of operation, local knowledge and experience of our E911 center staff, and the importance of a local E911 center to maintain a safe community for our, our citizens, current and as we grow in our community's future. All are key reasons why the Danville City Commission, in my view, adopted the budget in the current year that has the plan that we adopted. We're going to upgrade equipment, transition to a new center, get into medical dispatch as soon as we can. So, um... We've talked about that several different times. We've not talked about doing anything different several different times. And the only question that has been raised by the city commission is, how are we doing on implementing the plan, and can we get to medical dispatch center? I mean, it's not been, tell me more about other arrangements. It's been, let's keep to the plan we adopted. So that's what I am doing tonight, and in terms of reporting back to you on the hurdles or challenges or what we must do to implement medical dispatch service. We've met several different times with our key staff, our police chief, our, our 911 center supervisor, our financial director, and others. And so there are a number of things that we need to accomplish. One is the clarity of insurance coverage. These operations have the potential for significant claims being made against the center, or the city, center and the city. So we have clarified that we will have insurance coverage for these operations. Previously, the written coverage document, under our general liability policy, excluded any and all claims for anything arising from medical, provision of medical advice. The law enforcement coverage document provided coverage for all law enforcement personnel doing their regular duties, except for the provision of medical services. They were excluded, except for emergency medical services being provided on the scene. So there was a little bit of a gap in terms of the emerging technology of providing medical instruction, and they have, our insurance carrier has addressed that, and is going to issue a policy amendment or a new policy to clarify that we will have coverage for that additional service. It's been discussed that you could get flip charts and get into the medical service delivery at a very low cost. Generally, that is true in terms... Generally, that is true in terms of the software requirements to succinctly summarize the medical steps that might be necessary in case of a choking or a heart situation. They actually, the leading provider of that type of information no longer provides the flip charts that have been discussed previously, but they do provide software, and we can purchase those. The Department of Criminal Justice Training uses a product from Power Phone for their class, classes, and the city can directly purchase the Power Phone product for our existing or future E-911 service employees, who would have 30 days, basically, to complete a training, go through a practicum with the company, and become certified.
So, interrupt just a moment. So make it certain clear that these flip charts that we've all been told make it easy, they're not, they're, they're not available, they don't use those anymore.
At least the company that the Department of Criminal Justice Training uses, that company, Power Phone, doesn't sell the flip charts anymore. There might not be much of a demand for that, the need to read things instantaneously and quickly. It's all gone to electronic format, and so there's different ways of delivering that so it doesn't occupy your main screen, and it may be a laptop or some other notepad, but those can be readily accessed and provided. Thing of it is, it doesn't cost that much to get those, they're like $359 per employee. Once you buy it, the employee has 30 days to complete the training and be certified and go through a practicum of exercises to be deemed certified and qualified to provide that information. You know, we get better with, with time and practice, but that's the simple way of entering into delivering of the service. So all of our employees would have to go through that. And in future years, the Department of Criminal Justice Training does have advanced training in this software system, and that would count towards some of our annual training requirements that we must do anyway. But that's a thing that we would need to do. Now, you might recall that maybe six months or nine months ago, the city adopted an agreement that our council prepared or modified or revised or recommended, where our EMTs at the fire department and our paramedics there are under the supervision of a licensed physician in order for them to provide training and to provide that service. So we would similarly need to find, enter into an agreement with a licensed physician to warrant that we are following proper protocols in the delivery of our medical dispatch services. So that's another agreement that we would have to enter into, or possibly we could broaden the existing one to also include that.
Can the same physician oversee both of those things?
I don't know if that would be a conflict or not, it may be, and so I don't know the answer to that, but it's, it may, it's just a possibility to examine right now. But we would need a licensed physician, who is the physician of record.
Ron, why don't you reach out to Dr. Grant and report to us at the next meeting of his either acceptance or rejection of that?
Well, that may be a good idea. I know in Frankfurt's case, our police chief, Tony Gray, has said that they have the physician required there to do that. And Dr. Grant is a, earlier in his career, was a paramedic, and he has a passion, as we know, for that, and he might be willing to serve in that capacity. I don't know how much time it would require, but I will certainly invite him to discuss with me his thoughts about what that review scope might best be, and if he is willing to serve in that capacity, or if he has suggestions for others, if he's not available to do that for whatever reason.
Well, he was, he was very intent on, on making the city commission aware of what we're not doing, so now we're doing it, and let's, let's make him part of the solution.
Well, that's always good to be part of the solution. So I will advance that opportunity for him to consider. Our, you might recall, our landline capacity at the present location is a bit limited. If we get into extended medical dispatch conversations, which we said are required if we enter into that service, it could call some of our incoming emergency 911 calls to come in under another administrative line rather than our emergency line out there. That would mean that we would lose some functionality of E-911 location, automatic location, but we could still ask them where their location is. But our present number of lines at the present location are limited, so that is a factor, but not an overwhelming factor. The biggest factor is the additional qualified staff that we will need to hire and hire expeditiously in order to make this happen. We've had discussions with our director, Rebecca Halfley, has had discussions with former employees who are still working as dispatch in other communities about their willingness to serve in a part-time capacity, and some of those do already in various other venues, and we've received some positive feedback on that. So we're encouraged by that, and we believe we can supplement in our busiest periods of time with, with additional part-time. Now, we may have to necessarily and advisedly adjust their compensation, because it would be for an hourly work, not a full benefit employee, so instead of paying medical, you know, we may raise the compensation hourly rate for that, which would be a necessary and good thing to attract their interest and keep them interested.
Are they required a certain number of hours off-duty if they're working maybe full-time at another center? Can they come directly and?
I don't believe they are, unlike airline pilots or people in high-stress, or perhaps even traffic control operators. I'm not aware of any requirement. Chief Gray may have knowledge if they are, but I don't believe there are any at this point. So this is just to say that we are working at a fast pace and a serious pace to try to implement this service, and we believe if Dr. Grant has done a service to us and the community by pointing out that this is an area of improvement that we should try to implement. It costs money, it does take some time, it takes some involvement by all parties to cooperatively get there, but we're working to get there. Now, I also want to ask Chief Gray to, to respond. He is the supervisor, he and the assistant police chief at times, directly over the 911 center, and he has unique perspectives, I think, that are not understood by our community or perhaps even by staff or you, with regard to the involvement of 911 in police operations or in other, just the sheer volume of interaction that takes place. So with that kind of broad statement, I would ask Chief Gray if he has anything to add to the conversation tonight.
Our goal has always been to try to implement E-911, and it has been a staffing issue. When this first was brought to our attention, we had just hired three brand-new dispatchers. And contrary to natural belief, that just because they graduate the academy, they feel like that they can just step right into the role and start dispatching like a four, five-year veteran has. Just like anything else, like police officers, they go to the academy for 23 weeks, but they still come out and they do another 10 weeks of what we call ride-alongs or the PTL program. And, you know, we just don't throw them out there on the streets immediately, once they come back from the academy, there's, there's more on-the-job training and things like that to be done. We are a very high, active 911 center. A lot of calls go through that building up there. I don't think anybody really realizes how many phone calls those ladies take on a daily basis at times. Just Friday afternoon, right at shift change, about 11 o'clock, the sheriff's office was dealing with a drug situation, and they've, they're running four individuals, and one dispatcher's handle, handling three sheriff's deputies running four individuals, and then you have another dispatcher, and that's just on the sheriff's channel. And they've also got, that one dispatcher's also going to be monitoring EMS. And then the Danville dispatcher that's working that night is, is handling two check welfares and a call at Walmart. So you can see how, and that's all going on at one time. And you've got officers running licenses, social security numbers, data burst, and things like that, and you've just got those two people handling, you know, about nine officers at one time. We just fall in that little gap where we're, we're not big like Lexington, but we're not small like some other towns around us. And most of those cities that do do EMD are either they're very large cities, and they have a very big staff, or they're very small cities that don't have the call volume. And, and we fall in there, we're, we're in that in-between, and we have a large call volume for our center. So staffing does play a part. I, I think that that's something that sometimes that some of those people just don't realize that, how much that is. Like I said, if, if we have a wreck, it used to be a road in the bypass, those ladies are going to get 45 phone calls, or as many people that can see until the police show up. And they have to try to answer every one of those 911 calls. They don't know if they're calling about that same wreck or not. So that is, that's our conundrum.
I know retention's a big deal, too, because not everybody, even though they make through the academy okay, they get on the job and realize that that's just not their thing. It's a stressful...
A part of it is that a lot of the people that we do lose is because of, it is too much. And they will go to those smaller, a lot of the people that we've lost gone to smaller agencies and done well, gone to Liberty, gone to Harrisburg, and things like that.
Chief, you may not have the answer to this question, but off the top of your head, do you happen to know the percentage of calls that would require, that might require EMD for someone to stay with that call? Or how often do we have now where someone calls with, you know, what could be a cardiac arrest or choking or?
We really don't have those numbers, because a lot of times, see, we're just getting that initial call, and the initial call, you, you just don't know what that is. You know, the hospital, you know, they know when that person comes in and knows, was that call, it could have been EMD, he could have provided help or not, you know. Sometimes somebody can just get a very small scratch on the head, and they could, a mom that's hysterical is saying they're bleeding to death, you know? That, that might not be the actual case.
Or if we had, if we did have two people, can one person handle the administrative calls that come in, and the other person concentrate on actual dispatch?
See, what I was telling you about the incident Friday night, that's just radio traffic. That's just them talking to the deputies. That's not taking any phone calls. That's, and I think people forget that. There's people calling all the time about, now, like I told Mr. Scott this morning, I went into the post office and there was a dog in a, in a vehicle. And my thought was, how many phone calls will we get about that dog in the vehicle? And I'm not...
Sure, that's true.
But I...
Public doesn't know any, any better.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the way it is.
You know, we, we get lots of calls every day about, you know, you know, people driving improperly on the way to work, you know, from 7:30 to 8:30 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning. We'll get a lot of phone calls that just, you know, somebody about ran me off the road, somebody cut me off, you know, those type of things. And that's, that's just phone calls. But that's not counting, you know, an officer out on a call, you know, and we just got two people. So they're taking those phone calls, and they have to be responsive to the officer that's out on a call in the radio traffic. And so there's, you, you can't measure the radio traffic. Our radio traffic is ginormous, you know?
How many, I get a little irritated when I hear people bad-mouthing the 911 center about the job they do. How many complaints do you get about, from, regarding the 911?
Say that again now, exactly.
How many complaints do you get about the operation of the 911 center?
Very few.
I'm just saying, I get irritated when I hear people bad-mouth the job that they do. I think that that's...
I think a lot of...
Untrue, basically.
It's street talk.
Yeah. Well, I think what happens there is that a lot of people are frantic, a lot of times when they're calling 911, they have an emergency. And it's the dispatcher's job to really be succinct, get right to the point, find the problem, and get whoever, whether it be police, fire, or EMS, you know, to that person in need. And, you know, sometimes they feel like they've cut them off, or they've cut them short, and sometimes, you know, they, they don't realize that, well, I've got you where I need you, so I'm going to put you on hold and answer this next 911 call. And some people get upset about that.
And when we are short-staffed, sometimes there's only one dispatcher working?
At, at times, we, you know, now, we, we had a staff of 10, and we're down to nine. And they, like, like us, have to do the police department, they have to do yearly training and then have two weeks of vacation. So as you can see, it's hard to keep that, three people in there at one time is very, hardly impossible with just that number.
Ron, how much, how much did the extra cost of insurance cost us?
We don't know the answer to that at the present time. There was not any indication that there would be an additional charge for that, but frankly, it was an area of operations they hadn't fully considered until I pointed that out to them. So there could be some additional cost. But, you know, moving forward in terms of the big-picture things that we're trying to accomplish, we've never had in this city or county since the beginning of 911 service in the mid-'80s, any sort of agreement for services. And our general counsel is working, I believe, with the county attorney to try to come up, craft a service agreement that would have some improvements in terms of definitions and an advisory committee and an approved complaint process, those things that we talked about in early August when we met at the 911 center. And we intend to operate that and serve all entities in Boyle County that wish to continue to be served, who sign that agreement. And that will get us past the historic, the lack of willingness to sign that agreement, I think. And so it just is. I mean, it's like other services that we've talked about, and Stephen, you might want to elaborate on that.
Sure, I was just going to mention that that draft service agreement has, in fact, been developed. It has been provided to the county attorney, who has promised to provide that to all the court members this evening ahead of their meeting tomorrow morning. The county attorney and I are going to discuss it prior to that meeting as well. Late this afternoon, just prior to the meeting, I forwarded it to you for your review. What it seeks to do is alleviate the concerns that have been raised through this public process. It creates a grievance process. To your point, Commissioner Cottle, about people saying they have complaints, the city doesn't get written complaints, so it's hard to investigate street talk. And so there's a mechanism provided for filing a written grievance. There's also a creation of an advisory committee for all the emergency agencies that it serves to meet at least quarterly, discuss operational or technological issues, and it addresses funding, a mechanism for funding, both initially and moving forward. And it is much like the type of service arrangements that we have with sewer and water. The city operates a facility, and it is a resource, and those that wish to utilize those services, sign an agreement. We talk about, we finished a cost-of-service study and for water and, or from the sewer side, and this agreement seeks to do something very similar. You will, in essence, pay a portion that you utilize from, from the system, so to speak. So it's not unprecedented. This is simply a document that alleviates the concerns that have been raised through this process. It also stipulates that the city will commence emergency medical dispatch as soon as feasible. And so it provides both the fiscal court and any other entity served from the center a viable method of continuing to receive... a viable, um, method of continuing to receive services. Should they decide to go another route, then they are free to do so. But this says, moving forward, this is the way we will operate the nine-one-one center. And it puts everything in writing, the rights, responsibilities, obligations are clear and straightforward, and we think provides a viable opportunity for the county to act on it, um, as early as tomorrow, should they so desire.
So I was gonna ask if, if the fact that they requested this agreement meant that they were all aboard? Not necessarily. It's just something they're...
I would be cautious in saying that they requested the agreement. I think the city says, from our last meeting, when Bluegrass nine-one-one was being considered and evaluated by staff, that this commen, commission validated the city's nine-one-one call center and said, "We will stay in this business of providing this critical service to our citizens." And moving forward, if other public agencies choose to utilize this service, this is the manner in which we want to do it, to alleviate future burdens on the system that have, are over a decade old.
That makes more sense.
I think the other part that might be added in here, Mr. Scott, is, you know, we, we've just spent significant amount of time up here talking about allocating forty thousand dollars for further economic development, and, and I'm glad we're going to keep our employees here.
That's exactly...
And not employees going somewhere else, please.
That's exactly where I was going, Mayor, thank you. The re, part of the reason I was so passionate about that forty thousand dollars is because that's probably a dispatcher's salary.
Mm-huh.
Or a police officer's salary. And EDP has hired an employee who's gonna make almost as much money as our police chief. And our police chief has far more responsibility and far more employees to supervise and, and himself, and those employees are the ones putting their lives on the line every day. And I feel those are the reasons that we raise taxes, is to pay our employees and to keep them here, and not necessarily economic development. Because, you know, keeping our employees and, and paying them well and keeping them well-trained is also economic development. And because of chatter, or street talk, as, as Commissioner Sears called it, our dispatchers have been fearful for their jobs. And we, as a commission and, and staff as well, have tried to make them know that we are not interested in going to Bluegrass nine-one-one. But because of chatter and street talk, they have been fearful for their jobs, and we need to make sure that those employees, that all of our employees, are our priority. And when we sit up here and talk about forty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to the single mom who's a dispatcher at the nine-one-one center. And that's where our priorities need to, to lie.
With that said, we're still on item eight, the city manager's report. Mr. Scott?
Well, I think that's been a robust discussion of where we are and where we hope to go. And as we all know, the fiscal court is having a meeting tomorrow, and the city has been invited to attend and perhaps have an opportunity for commenting at the end of that meeting. So that's where we are. You know, I, I, I hope the county, uh, will value the service that we provide and they've been a part of for these many years. If they wish to explore other alternatives, that's their decision. But, uh, I hope that they will see the benefit of remaining, uh, in this, uh, system here.
We're gonna move on with the agenda to our second opportunity for the...
If I might, though, please?
No.
I, I would, I would like for us to, as, as, as we rise above all this and say, what do we really want? I would like for us to look at back, um, a year from now and say, you know what? We have the model nine-one-one center in terms of staff, technology, everything. Everything. I'd like for us to be able to, to, to look back a year from now and say, bring in anybody you want to Department of Justice. We've got the model. That's just my thought.
I also was gonna say, the, the meeting's long, but, um, they're still holding some of our money that would pay some dispatchers pretty good funds as well.
The service agreement we proposed and that is out for circulation and comment addresses those funds. So it's a, a stipulation that the city will provide the services, the county will transfer the funds, and all future additional receipts of state tax dollars and tax dollars from the local ordinance will be immediately passed through upon receipt to the city. So it, it does away with the quote-unquote "reserve fund" held at the county.
This, this may come up tomorrow, Attorney Dexter, but, uh, should they decide to go over to Bluegrass nine-one-one in Garrett County, does that change how the money funnels to Danville?
We will say no, it does not. That constitutionally and statutorily, those funds were collected for the operational expenses of the certified call center, which is the city of Danville. They were collected for that purpose and must be spent on the city's call center.
And it would, it would seem that they have less reason to sit on it then, as well.
I agree one hundred percent.
So AG hasn't written this tonight's letter or anything, has he?
We are still awaiting a response from a January letter to the Attorney General.
Thank you.
And I must move us again to hear the public.
You're trying to get out of here for your next birthday, aren't you?
Yeah, that's about, that's about six months, oh, okay. Anyone from the public is out to speak to us. All right, I think Mr. Huhn was up first, but, Mr. Huhn?
Yes, sir. This time last year, in the month of August, we had suffered eight overdoses in Boyle County due to heroin overdose in our county. Today, at the Shepherd's House, six graduated from our original class of seventeen through the IOP program. So that is a big success. Uh, just to continue to make you aware, on August the thirty-first, which is this Thursday at seven PM at St. James AME Church, there will be an overdose awareness, counter-light vigil once again like we did last year. Then on this Saturday, September the second, uh, the Run Against Addiction will be held at Millennial Park at nine-thirty. Just to keep the public aware, it's hard work dealing with those, dealing with addictions along with them and their families, but just to see six people graduate today through the IOP program has best been awesome. We're there every day working with them through their mess, through their ups, through their downs, but it's truly, uh, been an honor just to work with them to continue to do that, just to make you aware of what's going on in the fight against addiction.
Went to the St. James?
St. James at seven PM Thursday, Thursday night. Uh, be a, this, the International Overdose Awareness, uh, month, well, day, which is August the thirty-first. So that's seven to eight PM at St. James AME Church. Uh, there'll be a counter-light vigil, and then Saturday morning at nine-thirty at Millennial Park will be the Run Against Addiction, just to make you aware.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brother Matt?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Paris. I'll be brief. Um, I usually don't get up in front of a group and make a statement, but I'll...
Here's your microphone, please. Could you state your name, please?
Is that better? Oh. My name's Matt Cochran. I'm a fairly new resident of Danville, been here about two years. So, um, real quick, um...
Does that qualify for spousal abuse?
It can, it probably can. Um, I really don't have a staff. I have a question I'd like to pose to the commission, and just really, I want you to ponder this for future decisions. Uh, if you're here for the next commission, that'd be great. I'd like you to think about this moving on. Um, in light of a recent appointment to the EDP commission, um, I have a question I'd like to pose to you. How can we, as a city, being good stewards of tax funds, continue to fund an entity that has appointed someone to a position that is not a hundred percent vested in this community? And you may ask what I mean by a hundred percent vested, meaning not a resident, not employed in, they have an employee outside of this, this, uh, this county, and they also hold an elected seat outside this county. So that's the question, the question I pose to you, and I'd like, please use this in future decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. And in lieu of the length of the meeting, we have commissioner comments next on the agenda, but, uh...
Do you want to move that to the end?
I was gonna take privilege and move it to the end, or just...
Yes.
So let's move straight to, uh, number nine, payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of three hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Probably moving second. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wow. Number ten, fourth quarter budget report by, uh, Ms. Gossel.
Two minutes or less, Michelle.
I can talk fast, though.
Yes, you can.
She does talk fast.
Yes, you can.
You have before you the fourth quarter budget report for two thousand and seventeen fiscal year. It's, but, it needs to be noted that this budget report is before any end of the year adjustments, and before that we, uh, that we make it, it every year at audit time, which makes it a, a multi-type, by cash basis instead of an accrual basis. But this matches our budget more so, uh, as we budget going forward. And it also needs to be noted that, to remember that when we talk about budget to actual variances, that we budgeted to spend four million dollars of reserve fund that we had held over, uh, in this fiscal year. So when you see these numbers, this doesn't mean we have an additional surplus of this amount, it just means we're continuing to carry over our surplus. That being said, also, during our budget process, we anticipated this to happen in all these items that we're gonna talk about tonight. We anticipated and happened in the budget process, and we've been taking, we took care of them and rebudgeted the items that we needed to rebudget and to take care of that surplus, as we did before. Um, as you look at your major funds, uh, for the fourth quarter two thousand and seventeen, you have an overall positive variance to the budget of four, uh, point five-seven percent. This shows that revenues are flat at this time and not raising above what we said they were going to be when we done the budget process. This is normally how it, it goes, and, uh, we anticipated this again to happen. The ex, uh, the expenditures are slightly more comparable, we have more control over there of those. Uh, those have been adjusted in the budget process for the capital and grant and loans, they've been taken out so that, uh, it's more of a apples-to-apples comparison. And you have a positive variance of thirteen point two-six percent, and I give that credit to your staff of really trying to keep things cut out, and if they don't need to buy something, they don't buy, they don't buy it. Uh, the general fund overview, uh, the revenue's slightly over budget, nine point two-eight percent, and the expenditures are a little bit more favorable at thirteen point one-five percent. Uh, municipal aid, again, as we talked about before, this is supplemented now more so by the general fund than it has in the past, 'cause we lost funds, uh, for the gas tax. Uh, and we have, it was come out, just as we said, that we'd done our fall and spring payment list. Your stormwater fund has a, uh, slightly less than budget revenue variance of only point four-nine percent, uh, but it has a, a large positive variance in the expenses of twenty-six point seven-eight percent. Again, that is due to your staff and then also some projects that we have held over. Utility fund, uh, excluding loans, is a little less than budget of two point oh-five percent. Uh, that is probably, we, we, we budgeted a little bit, that we thought we would get the sewer rate done before the close of the fiscal year, and we didn't, so that takes up most of that. That wouldn't be, it's not a concern. Uh, but there was a, a very favorable operating expenditure variance on it also.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from the commission?
Um, I have a question. Ms. Scott, uh, at one point, I think you'd had a conversation about, um, dealing with parking in the garage particularly, and outsourcing that, perhaps?
I'm trying to recall that conversation, and you may have to give me an additional clue on that.
We've had the conversation a couple of times about outsourcing.
Oh, about outsourcing?
Outsourcing, and it's, and, and we're still looking into that. We, as of right now, we are still looking into that. We talked about it recently.
Yeah, Bridget Lester, our supervisor of that department, we, several years ago, looked and received, uh, some proposals for management of a parking garage. I've encouraged her to look at that again this fall. Uh, we are going to be making some, uh, energy improvements there in the near future, but it's an issue of ongoing sort of discussion we're having. We'll be looking at that going forward. I would say, just parenthetically, or just as footnote to that, we probably need to look again at our agreements on our, uh, parking lots. We haven't done that for many years, and it's a subject that, uh, everybody has an opinion about and few reach agreement on, but they haven't been updated in a long time, and we probably need to look at the, uh, fee structure for those and how we manage those. That could be part of possibly a, um, outsourcing of the garage for management of those, too, but this is sort of a long-range thing that we're kind of just easing into to talk about.
That is correct. That, one of the proposals that we've got, uh, we've been talking about, hey, we take care of the whole parking and not just the garage.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Michelle, and to the staff for keeping their expenses low. Or maybe Michelle just tells them no.
Item number eleven is, uh, second reading of ordinance number eighteen ninety-nine. A budget, a budget amendment. Uh, Ms. Pink, would you read that for us, please?
It's the second reading of ordinance eighteen ninety-nine. An amendment number one to two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen city budget, an ordinance amending a portion of ordinance eighteen ninety-five, which established the city of Danville, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year seven one seventeen through six thirty eighteen by appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
I move approval of the second reading of ordinance number eighteen ninety-nine.
Second. Any other, further discussion? Yeah, question. So, um, tomorrow, we're gonna, this, this amendment is because we want to move ahead with our nine-eleven center.
Mm-huh, yeah.
And so tomorrow, we're going to have a discussion about that, about moving those funds from the county over, and we want to amend the budget because we don't think they'll move them.
No, not necessarily. We budget on expenses and, which are called appropriations in the budget, and because we are taking the structure differently, that we, no longer wanting the county to pay bills, we want to pay the bills, then, uh, we would have to amend the budget either way, whether we get the money or don't get the money, we still have to amend the budget for the appropriation.
Thank you.
This takes the money from the general fund that would not necessarily have to be, it wouldn't come from the general fund if the funds were transferred from the county. However, what Michelle's saying, it would still require a budget amendment since the city is actually expending the funds. So if we get those funds, it will supplement the general budget for these expenditures.
And Commissioner, on the general point of the agenda for the county meeting tomorrow, I've not seen that, so I don't know specifically what that discussion may entail, whether it will get into the discussions of how or when they send us that money, or if it will be limited to the merits of the county's participation in Bluegrass nine-one-one.
Well, this is actually for an expense that they have essentially agreed to, but I think more what we're gonna talk about tomorrow is how we're gonna, how we're gonna do those transactions from now on.
Well, whatever the discussion is tomorrow, it's, tomorrow, it's their, it's their discussion, not ours. We're listening, we're spectators. We've been invited to come and listen.
The issue is that the expenditure of the funds necessary to upgrade nine-one-one will come from the operational budget of the city of Danville if the funds are not transferred by the county.
That's right. And that's really what we're approving tonight.
That's correct.
That's right. It's all we're approving, really. So a call for the question, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, gotta be your, no call on that one, that's right.
Commissioner Terry?
It happens to you.
Yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Item number twenty of its second reading of ordinance nineteen ninety, series twenty-seventeen eight bonds.
Uh, this is the second reading of ordinance nineteen hundred, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its general obligation public project bonds, series two thousand seventeen A, to pay or reimburse cost of public projects for the city and general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand B, two thousand seventeen B, to refund and redeem all or a portion of these, of the city's outstanding to refund and redeem all or a portion of these, of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds, series two thousand six A, approving the forms of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore created sinking fund, approving and authorizing the advertisement and acceptance of the bids for the purchase of the bonds, providing for a continuing disclosure undertaking with respect to the bonds and the city's compliance therewith and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
This is not only refinancing, this is new money.
This is new money, six million dollars. The first, A is new money for the energy efficiency project.
Right.
B is refinancing money.
Wanted to get that out there.
I would also add that the city maintained in preparation for issuing these bonds, the S and P bond rating of double A minus, which was our existing bond rating prior to the recent examination. So that's good news. It should mean that our bonds are very competitive.
That's an excellent rating.
It is.
Since this is new money, you think we get the EDP to match it?
Commissioner Siri.
Hey, it never hurts to ask.
Roll call vote, madam clerk.
Mayor Parris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sayers.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry. Yes.
Item thirteen, second reading of ordinance nineteen oh one.
This is the second reading of ordinance nineteen oh one, an ordinance establishing ad valorem tax rates for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and penalties for non-payment.
Chair entertain, chair will entertain a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number nineteen oh one.
Second.
Any other questions?
And and I recall this was the four percent, standard four percent increase?
Compensating rate.
No, this isn't compensating rate, not.
I'm sorry, thank you. I need to clarify.
We actually had a very minor decrease. We shaved, as the newspaper said, the property tax rate for the year going forward.
Got you.
So we'll need to say that once again louder. It's a decrease, right?
You want that in capital letters?
Roll call vote again, madam?
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sayers.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry. Yes. Mayor Parris.
Yes.
Item fourteen, resolution twenty seventeen oh eight twenty-eight oh two, symmetry by, by.
Staff would ask that you approve this resolution. This is purchasing back six graves from the Lively family, the estate of the Lively, of Pierce Lively, in the amount of nineteen hundred and fifty dollars.
I move to approve resolution twenty seventeen zero eight two eight zero two.
That is second. Any uh further comments or questions? Not all those in favor, resolution twenty seventeen oh eight twenty-eight oh two, say yes. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, resolution twenty seventeen oh eight twenty-eight oh three, Verizon contract amendment. Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, mayor commissioners. You have in front of you the resolution, which accepts the amendment as presented for Verizon on the Fourth Street Water Tower, identified herein as the Highland Court Water Tower. They intend to replace the equipment that is mounted on that tower. This amendment accepts those changes to the equipment identified on page three or four in your PDF.
How long's our lease for, for then? You might know, I'm just curious.
And how much do we get?
Now you're asking questions. We weren't ready for questions.
Never mind.
The uh, this one is a, from memory and around numbers, this one, I think, is a twenty-five hundred dollar installment, something like that. The uh.
Per month?
From what I recall, yeah.
Okay.
This is one of the original ones. The term of it, I would stay still, I would say is still extensive, probably at least ten years left on it. Without.
I'm just curious if you had that info handy.
Is that twenty-five hundred fixed?
I would have to go back and look at the original agreement. We could certainly do that if you wanted.
It doesn't really affect.
Yes.
No, we'll go on with this business, but it'd be like, it'd be nice to know.
Yeah. There's no financial terms affected.
Other comments, questions? Do we get a motion on that one?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, water plant.
Now, man, are you awake?
Are we paying him by the hour?
Nah, we don't pay him.
That's nice. Mayor Commissioners, members of staff, residents of Danville, I'm very excited to be here tonight. I'm also very excited, and I say this all sincerely, to be item number sixteen on your agenda tonight. I like that because you have invested twenty-four million dollars at your water plant. And typically, we are in the closing, you know, we're in the closing round here of being able to build this thing. And typically, the pitchforks are out by now if there is a problem on the project, which we have been very fortunate that with your staff's leadership, as well as some good contractors and an occasional bout of good engineering, we've been able to avoid uh any major problems on this, and we are moving forward very well. We, I'll give you a couple uh brief pieces of information. We, as you all know, picked up our pencils on this project May fifteenth of two thousand and eleven, so a little over six years ago, we started down this road together. We received bids in October of two thousand and thirteen. As you will recall, it was one of the larger investments the community had made at that time and probably in the last decade. And so I know there was a lot of apprehension when construction started in March of twenty seven, uh twenty fourteen. We went through sixteen months of reduced capacity that we talked about here candidly, but that we knew that your staff and operations would have to overcome, and they did that magnificently. And we have achieved substantial completion of the project as of June nineteenth of two thousand and seventeen. And there are still a few things to iron out. We're not done. We are pleased with where we are. We still have a few issues here and there with pieces of equipment that need to be ironed out. We're working productively with the contractor to work through the issues towards settlement, towards final settlement and a final settlement change order that I would say will come probably, if not in two weeks, it won't, it won't last past the following two weeks. So within a month, I'll be back in front of you all with a final number. What I, my chicken scratch shows me that at the end of the day, that number will be roughly two hundred thousand dollars different than what the original bid price was, or less than one percent in total change orders for a twenty-four million dollar project. So my goal is hopefully we keep it under two hundred thousand. That's, that's what I'm shooting for. That would be, you know, pretty remarkable, truthfully, in this day and age, working on a plant site that we basically rebuilt in its current form and and, you know, just kind of repositioned everything in in that arrangement with so, with several unknowns that went through with the intake out the leg. So we feel very good about it. We're not done. But, you know, we feel very good about where we are. KIA felt so good about it that most of you are aware, you were awarded the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority H two O award. I don't know if anybody wants to have this presented, but uh this is basically, the story on this award, as I understand it, this is inaugural award for this, is is basically.
City of first?
Financial stewardship on a project. And this goes back to the start of the project when you all implemented rate increases early to dampen the the long-term impact on your residents. It talks about the different funding sources you sought and found, uh one of those being KIA, and just basically how you have conducted yourself throughout it with the financial performance that we've been fortunate to have on the job. So congratulations to every one of you staff, as well as city commissioners.
Ron and I actually, and Earl and Andy actually accepted that award in Louisville last week, so, at the uh governor's local issues conference. And Earl got to meet uh Winston Bennett and Derek Ramsey, so his, his day was complete.
The only last thing I would say is there is a, we are gonna have our plant dedication or rededication, depending on how you look at it. It's going to be on Thursday at eleven thirty at the water plant, eleven thirty, right, from when we're starting?
Yes, sir.
That's what everybody's hoping to arrive. So please come, please bring friends, and uh should be a really nice event. And uh we'll celebrate the, kind of the reopening, have some tours and and be able to see what's, what's going on and what's transformed over the last six plus years. Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty?
Yeah, at noon. Can you, can you stall till noon?
I can stall. The food's probably arriving at noon is probably what it really is. Can I answer any questions for you all on this? I know you had a long night. I'm happy to answer anything I can about it.
Brent, again, that, could I just interject a question or a comment? That less than one percent change, under two hundred thousand dollars, is that unusual in your experience?
Yeah, I mean, so so truthfully, we usually, final numbers are gonna be somewhere in the, you know, if you've done three to four percent, you're gonna be in a pretty good range. You know, there, there, there's, there's things that you find in projects like this that you hadn't expected. Much of your work started in the twenties, went through the fifties. You know, a lot of the things that were in the record documents were were helpful, but they were incomplete for what we look for in today's design standards. And so you're, you're dealing with a lot of unknowns, especially when you're building on a site, and we were building on two sites that you, you couldn't really start from scratch on. We had to, you know, we had to work around what was there. And so that's, we feel really good about it. I mean, I wanna, I won't make too big thing and we're not done. And that's the big thing. We still got, we still got a little, little ground yet to cover, but we're well past ninety-five percent. And so we feel really good about where things are at. You should feel good about it. You got a great plan out there, and you got a great staff operating it.
That site was really tricky. And one of the things that I reflected on after we started thinking about it and looking at your letter and what, and and just discussing it with Brent, and Andy can attest to this, we've seen about a thousand sheets of paper that are just chicken scratch, where operator from Bobby Jackson way back beyond that, even Tom Crawford from the seventies, where they sketch things that they've seen exposed. I think we've seen it all now. Like, we've seen all the way around that, that building and pipes that we never, I never dreamed we'd actually, areas we'd dig up. And I think that's just really cool to me. It's pretty neat. A lot of history there.
It really is, really is. It's a neat project, and we appreciate the opportunity to be part of it.
You're gonna miss this. You can come back anytime.
I'll probably be here. You probably won't get rid of me too quick.
You can come back and get into the interactive rainforest.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious, um, is this one of the older water plants in the state or how far back do water plants go?
Well, so it depends. Some of the earliest, you all were really towards the forefront of it. There are some that are, the ones on the Ohio River, we've worked on for Northern Kentucky Water. They had intakes in in eighteen and it was Ulysses S. Grant was the presiding, was the president at the time. So it was eighteen eighty-six was when the first river intake, it's actually still standing. It's Newport's intake. Um and so they had, but but it was treated completely differently. I mean, it was just basically put into a big basin and they let the mud settle out and then they sent it out to drink. So, I mean, you pumped it in, you put it in a big basin and out it went. There was no treatment other than that, so.
We can't do that now?
Yeah, we try not to. We try to, we tried to give you something a little more than that when this, with this project.
Wow, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Item seventeen, resolution twenty seventeen oh eight two eight oh four, grant acceptance, and Chief Gray, you're up. You can borrow runs.
Drive carefully, Brent.
This is uh resolution two thousand seventeen oh eight two eight oh four is, that's our usual highway safety grant that we get every year. It covers overtime for traffic enforcement details. I think it's an amount of, was it eighty-eight hundred dollars? Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Will we accept that?
Second.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see what's going on here, Tony. And you know, we've had a few comments from some of the citizens here, in particular to speeding, so hopefully this will help us act on some of that. Main Street, Lexington Avenue, be specific.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen. This will order oh eight twenty-eight oh one two, twenty seventeen Safe Infant Act. Chief Gray, it's again.
This is a, just a change in our policies and procedures on the Safe Infant Act. Last year, right after we adopted our policies and procedures, the state went in and they changed the definition on the infant. It did used to read seventy-two hours, and if you look at your definitions, item A there, it has changed that to thirty days. And we also included that form on the back that anybody dropping off the child could ask those questions, but not identify that person that's dropping the child off. So it's just an update to the, updating the policy to meet the new state law requirements.
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Make a motion. I'll second.
Chief, how often does that happen?
We had one about six weeks ago. Uh was the first that I know of, and that's when we realized that our policy was out of date. Hospital wasn't aware of the, of this new law though.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Supposed. Thank you. Number nineteen, resolution twenty seventeen oh eight twenty-eight oh five, code enforcement discussion.
Thank you. This matter has to, oh, excuse me. Did you say you had a, did you have a question? Okay. Um the resolution before you deals with a code enforcement issue for the Sutton Steakhouse property on the bypass. It outlines that that property was condemned on July seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, as well as a demolition order being granted that same day due to the condition of the property. And the order was that it be demolished within ninety days. The owner of the structure is by the name of Coast United Advertising Company Incorporated. They did not appeal the condemnation order or the demolition order as allowed under our ordinance, and they failed to take any action to date at all to remediate the issues on the property. The owner is currently being cited under the new code enforcement ordinance that was approved by this commission earlier this year. And we cite that the property maintenance codes that went in, property maintenance code, that in the event that then an owner fails to comply with the demolition order, that the city shall cause the structure to be demolished and removed with the cost of same being tagged to the property in the form of a lien. City staff recommends advertising forbid the current, the demolition and removal of that structure from that property so as to comply with International Property Maintenance Code, place the lien on the property for that costs, and then institute a foreclosure proceeding in Boyle Circuit Court to have it foreclosed and recover all fees associated therewith.
I gladly make a motion that we approve resolution two thousand seventeen oh eight dash two eight dash oh five.
Second.
Second, third.
Fourth.
Is there a fifth?
If they properly moved in whatever that we approved this resolution, other comments or questions?
Stephen, I think if I heard you correctly, you said the latter was July of two thousand and sixteen, it's actually June. So it's been fourteen months, and I guess my question would be next time, do we have to wait this long before we do anything?
No, you don't have to wait that long. It is a matter of poli- The city appropriated, I believe, ninety thousand dollars. Michelle, can you correct me?
Ron sabotaged your microphone.
Feel like I'm getting the hook.
It's because he said spend ninety thousand dollars.
The, the proposed, what I believe Tom Byerly has stated that this demolition of this particular structure could cost as much as fifty thousand dollars. So it would consume half of the city's allocated budget conceivably for that expenditure. But we will, but we will see.
We'll get back.
Through a foreclosure proceeding, which may or may not occur this fiscal year. So that's just what, what you have. There's a finite amount of resources for this type of procedure, and so when compliance is, and self-remediation is always the goal of code enforcement staff. And when they get to this condition, they will make the recommendation that you proceed accordingly.
This is probably the most expensive demolition that has been done by the city. This is probably the most expensive demolition that has been done by the city in recent past. It's in an area that's having some increased economic activity in other way that we support economic development, so it's important to have that site clear and available for future growth.
It's a good lead into my question. Has there been any conversation with Jody at the EDP and how he thinks about?
Yes, I would say going back a few months with the Industrial Foundation, I don't know if it was with the EDP necessarily, but they were excited about the fact that they may have another, you know, either EDP or Industrial Foundation together. They were excited about cleaning up the ISO, first of all, sending a better signal to those developments that are underway or coming, as we have with the new steakhouse, and having another opportunity for marketing. So, yes, it's the simple answer.
So we sent them a letter, and we gave them 90 days. How do we accelerate the next time this happens? We give them 90 days. I'd like to see us say within 120, we're going to take action.
My understanding is that there have been some vocal conversations or oral conversations on the telephone, outfit that owns the properties actually in Los Angeles. So I think there have been continued discussions, and there hasn't, there have been no written responses or no action on the property itself, but there have been some oral discussions that have not come to fruition.
So let me, so let me put it this way, Counselor. When I get a parking ticket, which I do, I get, in 30 days, I get a notice that says you haven't paid this parking ticket. And if you don't pay it by a certain day, then it's going to be even more. So if we can do that for a $5 to $30 parking ticket, we ought to be able to do that on something of this large a scale.
Let me use your example.
Please.
If you don't pay that bill after it's increased, you don't get your car taken. You don't get locked up. However, upon the accumulation of multiple fees and multiple tickets, there will come a time where it will come to light. It won't be 30 days, it won't be 90 days, but eventually, it will catch up with you. Same is clear here. The only way to speed up this process is consistent pressure from this commission to bring certain properties in compliance with our property maintenance code.
And see, I don't understand that, because if our maintenance code says what it says, why is it dependent upon a commission?
Because you have to initiate the foreclosure proceeding. I think staff would be hesitant to go to the expense of what will be half of the demolition budget and expense $50,000 on top of initiating a foreclosure proceeding and the legal expenses there, that you do have to initiate any lawsuit from this chamber. And you have to be apprised of that, and so the best, maybe not for speed or efficiency, but for policy moving forward, it's imperative that the commission be kept up to date and to make selective opportunities for the finite amount of resources for this particular process. The city cannot, after the 90th day of non-compliance, in reality, even though you have the lawful ability to do so, we don't have the resources to demolish all the structures that would fall under that purview.
All of our structures, structures aren't of this magnitude, and generally speaking, the commission and the staff have tried to work with property owners to bring about self-improvement. Clearly, this hasn't occurred in this case, but that's, I think, is the first reason why, after a short period of time, we don't automatically initiate a proceeding for this body. We're still trying and having conversations in most cases with some party to try to bring about improvements.
And I will say that prior to the last few years, the city did not exercise its demolition power, period. I think the first one that we did is in the not-so-recent past. So, and this law and ordinance is not new to the city, so while it may seem inefficient and grossly overdue on your part, there are properties that have been condemned and on the demolition list since the '80s. But in the recent past, city staff has made an effort with the push of the commission to make it an issue to proceed. So maybe not perfect, but a lot better than it was.
Should we vote to go forward with this? I think there might be a caveat here, too, because I think that building's been leaking sewage down to the neighborhood below it in the past that Earl's probably well aware of. I'm not sure. I know one or two.
He is now.
So good for our sewer rate increase.
Hope the EPA didn't hear that.
Any other comments? We passed that resolution?
Did we vote on that?
No, we didn't vote on it.
You need to vote on it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There is a need for an executive session tonight?
Yes, sir. We do have a need for an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Die for the lack of a second, right?
His microphone's not working.
I motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to KRS
Second.
Probably moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contain a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Staff would ask that you grant in Juul and Juverillion an additional offer of employment for the West Department, given one successful completion on page two.
So moved.
Second.
Other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Contain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.